Oh, good, good, very, very good. Barely. Oh, we got Polarek, we could have him sit in. We could have you sit in, we get a quorum going. Yeah, we'll take anybody. All right. Greg's got the mic, he's gonna sing.
You definitely, you wanna clean the, clear the room out?
Yeah, I don't know what you're saying. All right, I think we're ready. I'll meet in order if everybody could stand.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Get a roll call, Madam Auditor.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Bozick. Councilmember Brickner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham. Here. Councilmember Justin. Councilmember Paparid. And Councilmember Sims.
Present.
For present.
All right, we're a little light tonight, so, but I think we'll make it through. So, I'll go ahead and, um, tonight is first reading and our public hearing, so we've gotta open that up, you know, to the public for any comment. So, I'll go ahead right now and open up our public hearing, you know, for our 2022 budget. I'll read off some, uh, some rules of conduct for that. The purpose of this meeting is to receive input regarding the 2022 budget. Every person appearing before the council shall abide by the order at the direction of the president. Those who would like to speak will be allowed a maximum of three minutes. Discourteous conduct shall be regarded as a breach of privilege and shall be dealt with with the discretion of myself, the presiding officer. So, there's your rules. We'll get into, um, first reading here by the auditor, and then if there's anybody from the public that wants to speak, that'll be after first reading, and then we'll kinda continue on, so. Public hearing open, um, Madam Auditor, can you go through first reading?
Yes, um, the public hearing and first reading for the proposed 2022 budgets for the Porter County Government, Porter County Recycling Waste Reduction District, Porter County Airport Authority, and West Porter Township Fire District will be held Monday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five thirty PM in the County Administration Center in Valparaiso. Fund name followed by the budget estimate and where applicable, the tax cap estimate. Rainy Day Fund, zero. General Fund, fifty-one million, five twenty-nine, five twenty-seven. Tax Cap Impact, one million, eight fifty-one, five twenty-three. Non-reverting, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven sixty-five. Reassessment, six hundred and seventy thousand. Tax Cap Impact, twenty-six thousand, one twenty-four. Bond Number Two, two million, seventy-three thousand, six sixty-eight. Bond Number Three, one million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, and twenty, and twenty-five dollars. Local Income Tax, seven thousand, five hundred and six thousand, five ninety-two. Police Pension, three hundred thousand. Animal Shelter, two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Convention and Visitors Bureau, two million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, five forty-nine. Highway, five million, seven hundred thousand. Local Road and Street, one million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand. Major Moves, Toll Road County, zero. Cumulative Bridge, ten million. Tax Cap Impact, two hundred and seventeen thousand, six ninety-eight. Health Department, two, two million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, three fifty-five. Tax Cap Impact, seventy-seven thousand, eight twenty-seven. Civic Center, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven ninety-three. Continuing Ed, thirty-six thousand. Emergency Telephone System, three million, seventy-six thousand, three hundred and ten. Jail Lease Rental, two million, nine hundred and sixty thousand. Park, three hundred and two thousand, three sixty-three. Parking Garage, seventeen thousand, four hundred. Plan Commission, one million, two hundred and thirty thousand. CCD, two million, six eighty-eight, nine seventy-one. Tax Cap Impact, one oh nine, nine thirty-eight. Community, County Corrections, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred. Prosecutor County User Fee, four hundred and one, three eighty-five. Health Maintenance, one hundred thousand and eleven, two hundred and fifty-two. Foundation Budget Fund, seven million. LEPC, twenty-one thousand, six hundred. Recorder Perpetuation, five hundred thousand. And Abuse, one twenty-seven, three twenty-six. GIS, seventy thousand. Prosecutor Pre-Trial Diversion, one hundred and twenty-seven, six forty-two. Juvenile Probation User Fees, hundred and forty thousand, eight forty-four. Adult Probation User Fees, eight oh seven, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. Surveyor Perpetuation, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight forty-eight. Fire Arms, a hundred and two thousand. Extradition, six thousand. Hazardous Substance, forty-eight thousand. Vehicle Inspection, six thousand. Accidents, twenty-three thousand, three forty-eight. Domestic Violence Grant, two hundred and sixteen thousand. Cable TV Franchise, one million, three hundred and twenty thousand. County Forty Incentive, two hundred thousand. Prosecutor Stop Grant, forty-six thousand, three thirty, three thirty-two. Memorial Opera House, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two sixty-nine. Public Safety Dad Attack, five hundred thousand. Jury Fees, eighty-four thousand. Elected Official Training, fifteen thousand. Clerk Forty, a hundred and ten thousand. Prosecutor Forty Incentive Fund, three hundred thousand. Wildlife Management Donation Fund, twenty-nine thousand, forty dollars. Photo Duplicates, thirteen thousand, two hundred. Emergency Medical Services, ninety thousand. Clerk Perpetuation, two hundred and twenty thousand. State Criminal Alien Assist, nine thousand, six hundred. Health Department Trust Account, eighty-three thousand, two ninety-two. Circuit Court, Family Court, fifteen thousand. Stormwater Management, four point nine million. Inmate Processing, three hundred thousand. Trail Fund, seventy-five thousand. Juvenile Probation Admin Fees, nine thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Circuit Court DCS, nineteen thousand, three seventy-eight. ARF MOH SVOG, three hundred and ninety-one thousand. Sheriff Riverboat Fund, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six eighty-seven. Circuit Court ADR, nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Addiction Response Grant, fifteen thousand. Juvenile Detention Codes, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Prosecutor Check Deferral, six thousand. MOHIAC Grant, eleven thousand, two oh two. County User Fees, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, and twenty-one dollars. Sex and Violent Offender Admin, twenty-seven thousand, seven ninety-eight. Hospital Sale Proceeds, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Drug Task Force, hundred and seventy-eight thousand, thirty-four. Public Defender Supplemental, one hundred and thirty-six, eight hundred. Prosecutor Forty PCA Fund, twelve thousand. Medical Care for Inmates, twenty-seven thousand, seven twenty. Prosecutor State and Local Grants, six thousand. DEA Proceeds, a hundred and fifty thousand. Portage School Resource Officers, three hundred thousand. Coroner Fatality Review, fifteen thousand. PC Sheriff Highway Intediction, hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred. Bioterrorism Response Grant, two hundred and eleven thousand, nine thirteen. Sheriff Overweight Vehicle, twenty-seven, two oh four. Highway Overweight Vehicles, sixty thousand. Sheriff Donation, sixty-four thousand, eight hundred. Sheriff Adult Community Corrections, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven twenty-eight. Public Defender Court Community Corrections, ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six. Adult Probation Community Corrections, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, six, three sixty-eight. Health IIC Grant, a hundred and forty-six thousand, five forty-five. Sheriff Videotape Fees, twelve thousand. Prosecutor Forfeiture, twelve thousand. Unsafe Building, two hundred and forty thousand. Highway Engineering, three hundred thousand. Ditch Fund, one million, eighty thousand. Animal Control Fees, Control, eighty thousand, eight forty. Animal Shelter Fees, Shelter, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, four oh five. Highway Community Crossings, one point two million. Court Interpreter Grant, ten thousand, eight hundred. EMA District One Task Force Fund, thirty-seven thousand, three sixty-eight. BASIA Guardianship Grant, sixty thousand dollars. Stormwater Bond Construction Fund, five million dollars. Sheriff Overtown, two hundred and fifty thousand. Sheriff Federal Prisoner Fund, one million. Airport, Special Airport General, one million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and four. Tax Cap Estimate, forty-eight thousand, one hundred. Special Airport Cumulative Building, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five. Recycling and Waste Reduction District, one million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine. Non-reverting Capital Fund for the Solid Waste District, ninety-seven thousand, three fifty. West Porter Township Fire Protection District, Special Fire Service General, one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, with a tax cap estimate of forty-three dollars. And Special Cumulative Fire, ninety-four thousand, eighty-five dollars, with a tax cap estimate of twenty-seven dollars. And that concludes first reading.
Thank you. We'll open the floor to the public, um, if anybody from the public would like to speak, um, you know, for the public hearing on first reading. Come on up. Anybody? Everybody out there? What's that?
Nobody's signing the sheet.
Yeah, we still let them talk. Nobody, Jim, wanna come up and talk about it? Anybody from the public, um, wish to speak on the, uh, 2022 budget? Proposed budget? All right, with not seeing any, um, I'll close the public hearing, um, for the 2022 budget. And, um, we'll keep moving on. Um, I know, like I said, we're a little light today. A few things came up with some other council members, um, so we'll get in. I know, um, Paige made it, so wanna come up? We're gonna kinda roll into, um, the plan that you put together for us, kinda the fiscal outlook. I don't know, um, if you want, if you've got copies, or if you've got a plug in to put it on the do not, okay. Nope, that's all right. In a warm car. So I thought it would be fitting, you know, a good time as we opened up the 2022 budget. We had, um, hired Baker Tilly to kinda give us a comprehensive financial plan, and I thought really it wouldn't, this would be the best time to, as we kick off the 2022 budget and kinda beyond, so. Um, Paige, if you wanna go ahead and kinda go through it as fast as you can, but you don't have to certainly. Should be, yeah.
Okay. So, yes, this is a very thick document. I'm not gonna go through it in a lot of detail, but I am gonna hit the highlights of the report. So if you just turn to page number four. So, the first thing, you know, we look at is, is how are you impacted by circuit breaker tax caps? And thankfully, you're not impacted as much as some other counties in the, in the state. So, um, what you're looking at, that graph on the top of the page, is, um, just looking at how much property tax do you levy? And then of the amount that you levy, how much do you actually collect? So in 2021, your total levy is forty-six point seven million. However, you will only collect about forty-four point, um, seven roughly of that. So, four point five percent of what you levy is returned to taxpayers in the form of credits. It's basically a non-collection of property tax. Property tax that just isn't collected. So again, that's not, you know, as bad as some other counties. But, you know, to say it another way, you would have an additional two point one million dollars that you could have to operate and fund your budgets, if, if we were not in the world of circuit breakers. So circuit breakers are here to stay, um, and, and that just kinda gives you a look at how you're impacted there. On page number five is a look at what's been happening with your net assessed value and your property tax rates. So, uh, this is a look from two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-one. In two thousand fifteen, your net assessed value was eight point seven billion. In twenty twenty-one, it's ten point five billion. So it has grown at a pretty good rate, about twenty-one percent over that time period. What that has done for you is to help keep those circuit breaker impacts lower than, than what they could be. But also, it's kind of equalized your rate. Your rate really hasn't changed that much. In fact, um, it's decreased by one percent since two thousand fifteen. So, in two thousand fifteen, your rate was point four four nine six. It is now point four four five two. So again, that growth in assessed value is very beneficial to your tax rates and your circuit breakers. So now, moving on, um, there are several pages in here, starting on page number eight through thirteen. That is just a lot of statutory fund descriptions. This might be helpful to you if you're trying to look at some of your other special revenue funds to fund some of your items, like out of general. You know, all these funds have very specific uses, but we tried to get as many of them in here as, as we could to help you with that. So that's just a guide, I'm not gonna go through all of those. Let's just get right into the cash flows. Again, there's lots of schedules. Um, on page sixteen is your general fund, and, and that really is your biggest fund. So I highlighted the lines that I feel are most important in these cash flows. We've got a lot of details, but really what I wanna focus in, uh, in on are the operating receipts that we're estimating. So on line sixteen for the general fund, if you look at 2022, we are currently estimating operating receipts of forty, forty point nine million dollars. So, if we talk about balanced budgets, what that means is your general fund budget would need to be forty point nine million dollars in order to have a balanced budget with your estimated annual receipts and not eat into your cash reserves. Now, there are times when you can utilize cash reserves. If you have one-time capital outlays, things that are not recurring, that, that's perfectly fine to use cash reserves. But you wanna try to avoid using cash reserves to fund recurring operating costs, like salaries and wages in particular. So we did not have your budget at the time that we prepared this draft. So we just, we just threw in, what would it look like if we did a three percent increase over your 2021 budget? So that would be on line twenty-six. Well, even at a three percent increase over your 2021 budget, you would still be utilizing two point eight million dollars to fund your budget, and that's on line forty-three. So on line forty-three is increased, decrease in cash. So if that's negative, you're using cash reserves to fund your budget. If it's positive, you're adding to your cash reserves. Well, you could see in 2021, we are projecting, um, a utilization of about two million dollars of your cash reserves. Now, this would be if you spent your entire budget. So we're just assuming, uh, one hundred percent spend of your budget. So, you know, again, we don't have the budgets as outlined here, your proposed budgets. But again, I think the main focus should be on the receipts on line sixteen. You know, where, where should our budget be if we wanna maintain our cash reserves? And that would be forty point nine million dollars. I did wanna point out one other line on here that's not highlighted, line forty-nine. That's the operating balance percentage. So what that represents is ending cash divided by your dispersments. So, at the end of 2021, we're estimating that you will end the year with a twenty percent cash reserve. That, that's pretty good. Uh, the floor recommended minimum is fifteen percent, so you definitely wanna be above fifteen percent. We just want you to try to maintain that, either twenty percent or above. So you can see what's happening just based on our, our initial assumptions is just a three percent growth. Once you get close to finalizing your budget, we're, we will finalize this report with your budget amounts within here, so you have a good plan, uh, going forward. Does anybody have any questions for me on general before I move on? I know that's pretty, pretty much one of your most important funds. I, I wanna note also that, um, the property tax is not as high as what it would have been had the Cume Bridge not been reestablished. So in essence, if you look on line two as your property tax, you see it's really not going up. In fact, it's going down just a little bit. Twenty twenty-one, thirty-five point seven million. Twenty twenty-two, thirty-five point seven million. Well, that's because, uh, when the Cume Bridge was reestablished, those property tax dollars, uh, actually went to the cumulative bridge fund. Because Cume Bridge is within the maximum levy limit, so it kinda shares, uh, property tax. So that's just something to note there, that there was a shift of some tax dollars there. Now, for each of these funds, I have some graphs. I'm only gonna go through the general fund graph, just so you know that it's here, and then we'll move pretty quickly through the cash flows. But, so there's two graphs for each fund. One is just showing a comparison of the receipts and the dispersments. And again, that's important, because whenever your dispersments exceed your receipts, that's a funding gap. That's basically, uh, uh, the gap is made up of utilizing cash reserves. And again, if it's capital items, one-time type of outlays, that's okay. But recurring cost, if you continue to do that year after year, you're gonna eventually run out of your cash reserves. The next graph on page eighteen, this is one I really like, because it shows the guardrails. So we have that dotted line at the bottom is the fifteen percent cash reserve. The dotted line at the top in green is the fifty percent. That's, that's like the ideal. You really don't wanna be above fifty percent unless you're saving up or something. So we wanna see you right in between, maybe around twenty, twenty-five percent. So, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, looking pretty good. Again, at the end of twenty twenty-one, still above that fifteen percent. But if, if budgets exceed, um, receipts, it, it may start declining. So now we'll move on to page nineteen. If you have any questions, just, just stop me. Page nineteen is your lit, so that would be your economic development income tax. And again, just focusing in on the receipts. On line twenty, uh, for line, I'm sorry, for year twenty twenty-two, line seven, the receipts are almost six million. Now, this is a bit of good news, because when I was here before, I was talking about how we anticipated local income tax for twenty twenty-two to be lower than the current year, for a couple reasons. One was COVID, but also because the state used fourteen months of tax returns to certify the 2021 distribution, and only ten months of tax returns for the 2022 distribution. But, all that said, you, that, the decrease was only about two percent. So, um, better than expected. I thought it was gonna be maybe somewhere around seven to eight percent. So what we're, what the numbers are reflected here are DLGF, the state's current estimates. Now, they could change, we realize that, but hopefully they don't change too much. We'll get the final numbers, uh, late October, early November. So I think that's a piece of good news. So, in 2022, your budget should be around six million, unless of course you have some capital items that you wanna take, take out of the cash reserves. Um, you can look down, at the end of twenty twenty-one, cash reserves are anticipated to be thirty-six percent. So, that, that's a very good cash reserve level in that fund. Moving on to page twenty, page twenty-two. This is your cumulative bridge fund. And if you look up at the very top on line two, you can see where the property tax did increase for the, uh, re, um, re-establishing of the rate. So in 2021, it was, it's four point two million is the property tax. In 2022, we're estimating five point nine million. And that's that re-establishing the rate up to point five, or point oh five five cents. So in 2022, on line ten, you're looking at operating receipts of about six point three million. So that should roughly be, uh, where you should have your budget. But your budget has been less than that in, in a couple years, and, and really, that's typical for a Cume Bridge fund, because it's very much project-specific. So there are gonna be some years where you're adding to the cash reserves, and then other years, you're gonna spend down your cash reserves. So that's pretty typical. You've got a nice reserve balance. At the end of 2021, we're estimating about a hundred and twenty-six percent. So pretty typical for, for a fund of that nature. Uh, page twenty-five is your cumulative capital development fund. Now, this fund, um, is a good fund to have, because it is outside the maximum levy limits. So it's a good idea for the county to periodically reestablish this fund. You're pretty close to the max now. It's point oh two, three, three, and I think you're at point oh two, something. You're pretty close. Um, I'm estimating that if you reestablish, you could probably get about another three hundred thousand dollars in property tax. That's net of circuit breaker even. So that might be something you wanna consider between January and the end of May. That's the timeframe to do that for taxes payable in 2023. So it might be a good idea. You're at point zero two, zero two, and the max is point zero two, three, three. So, if your net assessed value continues to grow like it has, it may just offset that rate increase. Um, so that's something we can look at at the beginning of the year, if you would like. Uh, pretty good cash reserves. At the end of 2021, we're estimating about a forty-six percent cash reserve in, in the Cume Capital Development Fund. So you get about two point two a year to spend out of that fund. Page twenty-eight is the health fund. So in 2022, the estimated receipts on line ten are about two point one million dollars. You've got a pretty good cash reserve. At the end of 2021, we're estimating about a twenty-three percent cash reserve. This is a fund where you, you may want to, and I think you already do this, is periodically review those charges for services to see if there could be some adjustments made there. Um, you know, this fund is reliant on property tax, but any sort of other revenue that you can generate in this fund is gonna help it be less reliant, and we can shift some over then to the general fund. So, again, the, the revenue is about two point one million, so that should be about where your budget, uh, falls. Page thirty-one is the local road and street fund. And another piece of good news is that your gas tax distributions, which would be MVH and local road and street, are going back up to nearly the same levels, if not more than they were in two thousand nineteen. So that's good. We did see a decrease in traffic count in 2020, and we did see the numbers go down. So in 2022, we're estimating about one point eight million dollars of revenue. This is sort of a project-type of fund. There's no salaries that can be paid out of this fund, so it is okay to eat into the reserves. Occasionally, it looks like you've been building cash reserves over the years. This is a great fund to help alleviate, um, any sort of shortfall in your motor vehicle highway fund, because it can be used for materials, supplies, equipment. It just cannot be used for personal services, um, salaries and wages. So, again, this would help to alleviate any sort of shortfalls in your motor vehicle highway fund. Good cash reserves at the end of 2021, um, over eighty-four percent cash reserves there. The next fund, uh, is MVH Restricted, is on page thirty-four, and it kind of goes along with what's on page thirty-seven. So, if you probably, you probably recall that in two thousand nineteen, the state requires you to take fifty percent of your MVH state distribution and set it aside into a restricted fund. And it's restricted for construction, reconstruction, and preservation of roads. Well, that caused a lot of problems for counties and municipalities, because most of what was coming out of the regular motor vehicle highway fund was salaries and wages and benefits. So you take fifty percent of your revenue away and put it over into a restricted fund, and that, that causes some funding issues. I think this county is doing a, a pretty good job of trying to find things to shift over to restricted. You can pay for salaries and wages out of restricted if it's tied to a specific project that falls into that construction, reconstruction, and preservation of roads. So if you just look at the restricted fund in 2022, we're estimating receipts of two point eight million. Um, and, and you do have some reserves there. So just trying to find things that you can fund out of this fund that, that fits within the statutory requirements, um, is, is good. You can also use this fund for matching grants for, like, the community crossings, uh, matching grants. So thirty-seven, page thirty-seven is the non-restricted park for motor vehicle highway. Again, two point eight million dollar revenues coming in. And this is where we see some negatives here, because really, the restricted fund is a sub-fund. So really, you just need to add those two together. And so if you add them together, obviously, there's no negative fund balances. But state board accounts have, uh, has us separate those funds. So there truly is a negative balance here. So just try to, again, find things to fund out of regular MVH that can be funded out of the restricted is gonna help you there. You're not, this is the same situation in many counties that I work with. I mean, again, you're taking fifty percent of the revenue that you're used to and putting it into a restricted fund. That's gonna cause some issues for sure. Um, the next fund is on page forty. It's your park operating fund. So this fund is just, uh, funded with charges for services and contributions and donations. So, uh, you just, we're projecting about two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of revenue. This is another fund. Any fund that can generate its own charges for services is one that you wanna periodically review to see if you can make adjustments, um, just to get additional revenues, if you can. I mean, you don't wanna outprice yourselves, um, but you might wanna look at surrounding counties as well. But any time, you know, not every fund can generate a fee or a charge for service. And so those funds primarily are funded with property tax. So anytime I see a charge for services, it might be something that you wanna periodically review and see, um, if you can adjust it. At the end of 2021, we're estimating our cash reserve of about eighteen point three percent. So it's above the fifteen percent at all. Uh, moving on to page forty-three is the reassessment fund. The estimated The estimated receipts for this fund is about five hundred and forty-seven thousand for twenty twenty-two. So again, that should be about where the budget falls. At the end of twenty twenty-one, your cash reserve was seventeen percent. So still above the fifteen percent recommended minimum. This is a fund where a lot of counties will shift some property tax over for a year or two and then shift it back over to general. So it's common to see the property tax levy go up and down in this fund. It's kind of just as needed, and that's exactly what's happened here. You can see on line two, property tax was around three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then it jumped up to five hundred thousand. That, that's typical. But remember that, you know, the general, the reassessment, the health, the cum bridge, they're all under this one maximum levy limitation. So if you start shifting levies, it's gonna have an effect on another control fund. Page forty-six is the plan commission. And in twenty twenty-two, we're estimating about six hundred and ninety-four thousand in receipts. This is another one that generates revenue through licenses and permits. So again, just kind of reviewing that to make sure that you're charging, you know, a reasonable amount that's covering at least part of the cost of providing that service. At the end of twenty twenty-one, we're estimating a cash reserve of thirty-six percent, which is well above that fifteen percent minimum. The next fund is on page, we'll run forty-nine. This is your stormwater fund. Twenty twenty-two, we're estimating receipts of about three point six million dollars. This is another one. It, it looks like you've been running out of deficit or actually using your cash reserves for a few years now. If you look down on line twenty-four, in two thousand nineteen, you utilized three hundred and fifty thousand, twenty twenty, seven hundred and forty-three thousand. Twenty twenty-one, we're estimating you're gonna use about one point one million. Now, there are, there are capital items involved in that, understood. But I would just keep an eye on this fund. This might be one where you need to review those charges for services. Cash reserves at the end of twenty twenty-one, very good, sixty percent. But again, we're seeing a decline based on the revenues coming in. Riverboat on page fifty-two. So in twenty nineteen, there was a piece of legislation that was passed that is gonna, is gonna start decreasing the amount of riverboat revenue to counties and municipalities, and that's scheduled to start in twenty twenty-two. I haven't seen any numbers yet from the state, but at least back in two thousand nineteen, it was estimated to reduce your riverboat distribution by twenty percent. It remains to be seen if that's what will actually happen, but we've built that into the report. So you can see on line three, we're estimating about three hundred and twenty-five thousand coming in for, for your riverboat revenue. And then we just flatlined the expenses to match that exactly. So I, I foresee that sometime in the future, this revenue stream will likely go away for, for counties and municipalities. It seems to be that's what that piece of legislation is trying to do, graduate the, the revenues to where it's probably gonna go down to zero. I don't know over what time period, but it seems to be diverted to other areas, like state police and, and schools and, and things of that nature. So I know it's not a large revenue stream for you, but I just, I just tell you that, that it, it declined over the next few years.
Was there a, Paige, was, I mean, was there a horizon where completely, we were gonna lose this revenue, completely?
That piece of, that statute is very confusing. I'll just have to, I'll be honest with you. But yeah, it does seem to continually decline. But that's a good question as to when, when would it decline? I mean, is it gonna be twenty percent per year? I don't know. I'll look into that for you.
So I glanced at the legislation too and read kind of the summary, but it seems like it was just basically a, giving the money back to the river, the casinos.
Yes, exactly what I thought, yeah.
You know, so it's something that we, we definitely need to, we, we pay for longevity and undercover drug dealing out of this, correct? So it's something we need to pay close attention to. I mean, it's, it's an amount, but that would affect us.
Page fifty-five is your statewide E nine one one fund. It's been, you know, relatively stable, but definitely not increasing. So the situation that I see all over the state is that your expenses are increasing in this fund, but the revenues are really not increasing. I mean, you can see on line two, two point one million in nineteen, two point one six million in twenty twenty. Based on, you know, year-to-date through June thirtieth, estimating two point one three. So it doesn't really change that much. So this is one where we do see issues in a lot of counties where it's, it's really hard to fund E nine one one. And we see counties adopting public safety lit just to try to pick up some of these costs and other public safety costs that are in the general fund. So we do see, you know, potential utilization of cash reserves. They're pretty strong right now. But keeping that budget to two point one, I think, is gonna be a difficult task, just based on previous years' expenditures. Page fifty-eight is the cable TV franchise fund. And most of the counties I work with, this cable franchise revenue is deposited directly in the general fund. So you, you all have it as a separate fund, that's fine. But it should be, excuse me, utilize the health fund operating costs, which I'm sure that's what is, is being used for. So estimated receipts are about one point two million and pretty strong cash reserves. Page sixty-one is your insurance fund. This is really one that's difficult for us to do any sort of forecasting. I'll just be honest. We're estimating receipts, just flatlining what occurred in twenty twenty, so about eight point six million in receipts. And then the disbursement's pretty much just flatlining that. I think what's important to note on this particular fund is that having a thirty percent cash reserve would be ideal because you just don't know what's going to happen. At least, I would say a minimum of thirty percent. So we, we put a box down here at the bottom of the schedule just to show you what a thirty percent reserve looks like. So for twenty twenty-one, that would be about three million dollars, based on the expenses we're showing here. And you're only at nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, estimated. So this is a tough one. It's just so, insurance is so volatile, and you just, you don't know what type of claims you're gonna have, et cetera, et cetera. But this may be one you wanna reconsider as to how much money you're putting into this fund.
Yes, our auditor's been sounding the alarm on this for about a year and a half. So we, we understand. We gotta keep an eye on that. We did infuse it with a little bit of money, but it's nowhere near. And I kind of wondered about what, we talked about it a little bit, what would be a good reserve for that fund. So.
I'd say minimum thirty, if not fifty percent, honestly. I mean, it's just, you just don't know what, what can happen.
Right. And we've gotten, long, long time ago, we had, we had issues, fought our way out of it. We don't wanna go back there. So.
And you're advocating strength to try to shore that up.
Right. So we gotta pay attention. She's, she's been honest about it. So it's something we need to pay attention to.
And page sixty-four is your last fund. It's the foundation budget fund. And we have the estimated receipts there. I think it just, I'm still a little unclear as to how this, that's been utilized. But at least you can see some history as, as, as to your receipts and disbursements in this fund. So really, the rest of the pages are just for your information. We do have a schedule of your debt on page sixty-nine. And I, I chuckle a little bit because most counties I work with, the debt's all the way down the page. You only have three pieces of outstanding debt right now? That could be a good thing. It could be a bad thing. And sometimes it takes issuing debt to respond to growth. Debt isn't always bad. But I, you've done, you've done well with only issuing three pieces of debt, so, you know, it depends on the way you look at it, I guess. So as far as options, you know, options to fund, to bridge funding gaps, you know, I mentioned the re-establishing of the cum capital development fund. And now I'm gonna mention stuff that people don't want me to say, like county real tax is an option. And, you know, your pub, your, your local income tax is one of the lowest in the state, and I, I'm sure you're proud of that. But just always remember in your back pocket that you could adopt a, a public safety local income tax. If you only adopted a point two five percent, it could generate three million dollars. That would go a long way to help you with dispatch, the E nine one one, and then also diverting public safety costs from general and, and helping that. So I mean, you've got options. I'm not saying that you have to exercise those options now, but those are a couple of the options that you have. So I went through that really fast. Do you have any questions?
No, I think it's great information. You know, it kind of makes us step back and, and look at it from a, kind of like a holistic standpoint. You know, not just, we get in here, you know, trying to see things through the general fund, general fund only. You know, I, even, I was just, Sylvie and I were looking at page sixty-seven. It really gives a good picture of, of all the funds that you kind of just went over, a summary of, you know, cash balances at the end of the years. And, you know, we, we're, we're in good shape. We, we just, we gotta continue to be mindful, and I think that's what this, this plan does, is puts it in front of us and makes us focus on all these to look at things, you know. You know, the increase of the bridge fund, you know, has kind of put us in a little predicament of this budget session. So we've gotta be creative and figure our way, you know, out of that. I don't think we're in, in trouble by any means. So we just gotta continue to do what we do up here, communicate, be creative. And kind of, you know, and another thing out of this is, to me, figure out what those cash reserves should be. It's not really something we've focused on before, you know, figure out all these different funds, you know, as a, as a body, you know, where we want these cash reserves. Nikki, we were just talking about it a little bit ago. You know, what, what's, what's healthy? How do we stay there, you know, in the, but I guess, thinking the last couple of days, I'm, I'm not sure you can just say seventeen and a half percent for all the funds should be that floor, you know, because they're different. Like the cumulative bridge fund, where, you know, you're gonna see the reserves go up as anticipation of bigger projects. So I don't know if we could just take a blanket approach and say, you know, our, our policy is seventeen and a half percent or twenty percent. But, you know, even like the health insurance fund, you know, maybe higher. But this, this should help us a lot, you know, in looking at all the different funds as we get into this budget session. And like I said, and beyond. Because we, you know, we've tackled stormwater over the last couple of years. And as you can see, we are going into the reserves, because there's a lot of work that was put off for a long time. Our roads out there, you know, I think we've got over, Jim, eight hundred miles of roads in this county. Hundred and thirty bridges. It, it's, we've got a lot of infrastructure that we have to maintain. So, and we have to figure out how to fund it also. So there's, there's a lot that we have to tackle. That's me. I mean, anybody? Questions?
We've been here before. And this is, we've had some adjustments this year with the, like, the bridge fund. And so we just have to maybe go into, look what funds have been used. See them by line items in the different departments and see if there's any extra money they, you know, we can take out there.
Anybody? Anything else for Paige? What's she hearing? And I don't, I'm, I'm sure Mike and Andy will watch the video if they can hear you. I know they've got this, you know, the draft report. So, you know, they've had some things pop up, you know. Bob stayed away from us tonight, but everybody should be back in action next meeting. And, you know, they've all got the draft. And I, I'll make sure that, do you, can we email a copy to, to Joy and then I can get the, any updates?
Yes, absolutely. Here's some extra copies. The only thing that's changed in this one is that we did update the local income tax because we just received that recently. But yes, I will be happy to email it.
Okay, I appreciate it. Very, very helpful. And, you know, you got any questions? Major, maybe somebody can answer with this whole increase of the, the cumulative bridge fund. I was looking, there seems to be a couple of counties that have like a major project bridge fund. Is there, what's the difference?
So yes, there is something called a major bridge fund, and I think it has to do with your population. I'll be happy to look at, into it for you, but the major bridge fund is outside the levy limits, but I don't think every county is eligible for that. So I will look, I will look into that for you.
Yeah, 'cause that was kind of surprising. There's a couple of counties had it, but, and then.
There's just a few.
Of course, it caught my attention because it was outside. So, but. And I think one of them might have been Allen County, which then throws me back to, I think Allen County's usually in special legislation, aren't they? The Lake County, Marion County, and Allen County, the special counties in the state.
Yeah. I think Elkhart County also has the major bridge as well. But yeah, there's a few special counties.
Elkhart County is not that much bigger.
Yeah. Yeah, they're special, all right. So. Anybody? Anything else for Paige? All right, well, I appreciate, appreciate you coming up and presenting this and the work. So. All right. Yes, thank you. Yeah, leave them. So with that said, Madam Auditor, I know we, we've had a few conversations, and I think the other members have had a few conversations with you. I mean, you kind of wanna give us a little summary of where you think we're headed. Any landmines in front of us?
Right. Before we go into that, I just wanna mention something that I think I usually mention at first. The numbers that I read were not what the various departments submitted. You directed the departments to submit the same budget as the current year. So those numbers that I read are just for advertising purposes. Because if you do choose to increase the budget, you wouldn't be able to if we didn't advertise high enough. And we also have to advertise the levies high. So really, the numbers that I read, no one should think that, you know, you're getting ten million dollars or whatever. But it is, it, it's for advertising purposes only. And if you do choose to increase the budget over and beyond what we advertise, you'll have to adjust that at the start of the year with additional appropriations. And we've been there before, and it's just a lot of extra work. So hopefully, we advertise high enough to avoid that situation. Okay, so now you mentioned where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, what's your thoughts moving into this budget?
Okay, well, you mentioned, and Paige also mentioned, the cum bridge fund rate. It is true that the tax rate is going up for the cum bridge fund for next year, and that is eating into just about all of the levy increase. And I don't feel that it's the end of the world, however, because there's other revenue that comes into the general fund and the other property tax-supported funds. So it's just a matter of managing the, the various funds. And that's something that we've been doing in the auditor's office these past few years, managing it so that we always try to grow either our cash balance and/or our operating margins. And we've been pretty successful at that. So in terms of the general fund, do you wanna just talk about the general fund right now?
Sure.
Okay. Paige presented the long-term look at where the fund would be and all the other funds would be, under some assumptions, under some revenue projections and spending projections. And as you all know, because I'm sure you read the report, one of the assumptions is a three percent increase in spending. And I am not at all suggesting that you go to three percent. I'm suggesting that you go no more than one point eight percent in the general fund. And that would stave off that drawing down of that cash balance that we've been talking about. And that would be an increase of no more than eight hundred thousand. And you don't have to go all the way up to eight hundred thousand if you could shift around expenses. But that's as far as I would recommend increasing the general fund, only because looking at the long-term sustainability of where we're headed. The cum bridge fund and the CCD fund are rate-driven funds, and so you really. Um the Q bridge fund and the CCD fund are rate-driven funds, and so you really, um, you can approve a budget of what you feel is is proper. But if, but they're going to get that levy, and so if they want, if if they need to go over the budget, they would come back for additional appropriations. Um with the reassessment fund, that is a very, uh it's also a property tax-supported fund that is within the levy restrictions. And because of the levy restrictions, we're not seeing much of an increase available in that fund. The good news is it's a small fund and it's targeted towards certain expenditures. And then um the health department fund, as Paige mentioned, is in fairly good shape, but it's really in better shape than what it appears because of a CARES Act reimbursement. We were a little concerned about the sustainability of the health department fund a few years ago. Last year, we reallocated some of the levy to help shore it up, and then we received at the start of this year some payroll reimbursement. So I'm not worried about the health department fund um that much, uh at least going into twenty twenty two. It's not going to see um much at all of the levy um impact at all, but it will be able to sustain that. So the, what I just suggested with the eight hundred thousand with the general fund comes with the caveat, though, that next year, um there's no further rate reestablishment for the Q bridge fund. Let it sit, and let's see how the other funds work. I'm not suggesting cutting the the rate, I'm just suggesting no more rate reestablishment. That's not your decision, I don't believe you have any say in it, it's the county commission um decision. And so this year, or next year, there'll be a funding boost for the Q bridge fund. And that will be, according to um the commissioners and the highway department and stormwater, that fund needs that funding boost. So let's give it a year, and then next year, if there is a levy increase, that can be reallocated then like normal to the general fund, health department, and reassessment. And the other caveat is that you continue to restrict additional appropriations in the general fund and the other property tax-supported funds. But you need to keep keep the additional appropriations to the general fund because you know what additional appropriations are.
They're additional.
It's going over budget, it's going over your budget, very important.
So in the um, the report that was uh done by your office, I think Tiffany, one of my favorite Cubs fans, I don't really like the Cubs, but she put together this report. Um so you're thinking that we may be able to increase the general fund by eight hundred thousand dollars, you know, like. I think that's drawing into our reserves a little bit, um but the request in front of us is, they put together this nice report of, you know, five or six pages, a summary of what has been turned into us, and I I I think what's turned into us is an increase of two point three million dollars. So I I think that should let us know, again, just like every year, we've got our work cut out for us. So we have two point three million dollars of requests between budget and personal services in front of us. We have, in my opinion, eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot that, you know, to increase the general fund because of the bridge fund. But I don't think it's the end of the world, I think we've we've put ourselves in a good position to be able to absorb something like that, and we do need to fix our bridges. So it's, we do, I mean, infrastructure's an important part of what we do, stormwater, roads, bridges, and stuff that we have to do, so.
And 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 I'll do respect, when the commissioners reestablish the rate, whenever they reestablish the the cumulative funds, you have to do that at a certain time in the spring. And um and this is the case for all other taxing units, not just our county. And there are many taxing units that reestablish the rates every year. Uh but no one really knew, everyone knew that it would take up more of a levy, but nobody knew at that time just what the impact is because at that time, we were missing the two critical numbers that we needed. We needed the state growth quotient, which wasn't released until July, and we also needed our certified N A Ds, which we did on the state deadline this year. Um and once we knew those, once we knew the C N A D, we knew what the levy was going to be because it's a rate-driven fund. Then when we knew the state growth quotient, we knew how much we were able to work, you know, and that's where that's where this this recognition came up just recently, so. But we can work around it, that's not uh that it's not the end of the world. If it keeps increasing, though, um the general fund would would not be able to um grow.
Yeah, I don't believe that's the intention, I at at all. So I I and I agree with you, it's not the end of the world, we've put ourselves in a position that we can, we can work around this, we've gotta fix our infrastructure. We've been, we've done it pretty aggressively over the last couple of years, and I think we're gonna continue to do it um while also maintaining everything else. So um I think we're gonna be fine. I mean, we obviously got our work cut out for us, and and I I don't, as anybody can see, we've kind of condensed um the budget process here a little bit into three meetings. And, you know, we've talked, Harold, Vicky, and we've highlighted the budgets that have changes. So we're not gonna open every single budget up unless the department head wants to, if there's no changes in it, I don't see a reason why. If it's the same number, that allows us to focus on what needs to be focused on, and, you know, me not up here rattling through numbers and just wasting time and sucking oxygen out of the room, let's open the budgets that have changes, and let's let's have some, you know, really meaningful discussion on on what those changes are and why we should consider them. So so we've moved everything into three dates, um and I was just talking to Vicky, just in case, you know, you know, those three dates, we start second reading on um the thirtieth. You know, and then move right in. So we've got a couple of weeks to really dig in to things, and then the fifth and the sixth of October, and then final reading on the fourteenth, tentatively is what we're looking at. But if things get a little bit crazy and we can't come to agreement on things, and I was just talking to Vicky, I mean, it gives us a little bit of room. Maybe the last week of October, if we had to, just in in case, emergency, but I think the plan is to have it done by the fourteenth, for sure. But we do have a little bit of room, so. I think we gotta take a vote on first reading, start with that, and the numbers that were presented. Is a motion on the floor?
Second.
The second for first reading, any any more continued discussion? We get a roll call, Madam Auditor.
Okay, Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Order zero to approve first reading.
Move on to second reading on the thirtieth, um, anybody? Mike, Greg, Sylvia?
No, I think that uh, you know, we know what we have to do, what what we have, what we have to reach and um make sure that the um everybody knows, you know, what, we're gonna do everything we can and make it make it happen. We have actually given pay raises steadily over over the years, good raises. We've backed our employees, and we'll do everything we can to do as best as we can this year too. But it's it's gonna be a a tough uh tough goal, the uh cumulative bridge fund uh kind of wiped out our growth pattern, but uh we'll do it. This isn't the first challenge.
Smart bunch up here, we'll figure it out, and 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 you're right, I don't I don't remember since I've been up here the last time we haven't given some some sort of increase to our employees. Um so. Mike, Greg? Harold? So Harold, and and maybe something you can quickly maybe talk to Vicky about too, is, you know, in second reading, and I I don't know if it, when we make the changes, we wanna vote on the changes. But all the other funds that aren't changed, is there a reason to vote on them, you know, as we fly through second reading, on the on the ones that aren't changed?
I don't think there is a need to, I I, you know, you can certainly in one fell swoop have a vote, and if it's unnecessary, it's not gonna hurt anything. For those funds that haven't changed at the, you know, once we get to that stage, and just do them all at one time.
At the end of the night, maybe, you know, just a.
I I I don't think it's necessary, but it would.
Wouldn't hurt.
Actually, we have marked, and we know what.
Mm-hmm. All right, Harold, you got anything else? Anybody? All right, Vicky, Tiffany, Tony? All right, anybody else from department heads, you wanna throw anything out there right now before we jump into it on the thirtieth? I think you got got all our numbers, um call us, continue to call us if you got questions, and, you know, you wanna twist our arms on things. So we'll be here in two weeks, so. Motion to adjourn. Is motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Greg, I will have to stay here all night.
Aye.
Realize that now. I don't know what to do, I really don't.